Good evening. This is Tuesday, November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, meeting in the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. The other band T-shirt you decided to wear tonight or anything you intend to or not screen share on your computer. Anything you broadcast will be captured and recorded forever and ever and will possibly wind up as a YouTube video to be shared amongst your neighbors and friends. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members of the board are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please inform, uh, respond in the affirmative. Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
Thomas Andrew.
Here.
With a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty-four P M. Tuesday, November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. This is an open meeting in the Planning Board. It is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I'll introduce the speakers on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. I will invite each board member by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights, and/or emotions. Please hold all your insights until your name is called. Board members and speakers, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. For any response, please wait until you yield the floor. State your name before speaking. If a board member wishes to engage in conversation with another, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note, any vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. So, we, I don't know if there's any administrative tasks or functions or anything that needs to be done. Um, Jay didn't indicate there was any mail or anything that needed to be addressed. Does anybody have any outstanding bills or anything that, that?
I have, I, I have a bill I'm gonna dig up.
Okay, there was an email, Tim, that was sent to you and me. Um, talking about closing out an account and moving it to another account. Did you see that from Kristen?
Um, regarding, was it housing?
Yeah, so what it was, was the account was for people that donate money. And they were closing that out into a different account. But they wanted to know if we were still draw funds from it for Housing Partnership and all those type of things, not Housing Partnership for the Consortium bills and things like that.
So it says there's an article on the December special town meeting that seeks to transfer a total of five hundred and two nine, five hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and two dollars.
Wow.
In affordable housing funds currently in donation accounts. That, so that's mitigation money from
Correct.
Highland Commons and et cetera. That has been that has been assessing huh for both the housing production plan and to pay Metro West Housing Coalition to the Berlin Municipal Housing Trust. The annual cost of the Metro West services that we budget for our seven thousand. I want to confirm that the Housing Trust will still continue to pay for this out of these funds as has been done each budget season unless services are discontinued. I also want to ensure that there are no outstanding bills that the Planning Board has in either donation account. Outstanding bills, please advise.
So there's no outstanding bills to my knowledge.
So we have a bill from Metro West Consortium.
Okay.
Pam Hellenic. Well, let me keep fishing for the amount. You can go on to stuff. It's, it's, uh, it may be fourteen hundred bucks. I'll, I'll find it though.
Okay, so do, to your knowledge, I mean, we're not, obviously, we're not losing the funds that is being moved to another account. I don't understand why they can't stay in the account, the donation account, but.
Well, the way it stands now is we have the authority of it for its expenditure.
Correct.
And what they, I think, are proposing to do is to take it and move it into the Housing Trusts because we've always used it to pay Housing Trust and Activity stuff, so.
Right.
And the, and the Housing Partnership didn't have the authority to do that. So we did it essentially on their behalf.
Got it.
So this bill is, so I'll make a motion that we pay one thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents to the Housing Consortium for quarter one and physical twenty-five and quarter four and physical twenty-four. We, we, um, encumbered the money for the last quarter of twenty-four with a, with paperwork that we gave to June. So that's, they were aware that there was going to be an outstanding bill from twenty-four that would be paid twenty-five. Um, so we're all set on that. There's no problem. Um, but that's the amount, one thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to pay the Housing Consortium. Um, quarterly bills in the amount of one, one, four, seven, fifty. A quarter is one, twenty-twenty-five and four.
Wait, is the, how much is the amount?
One, one, four, seven, fifty.
I thought it was one, four, four.
Four, seven, fifty.
One, four, four, seven, fifty. Sorry, my mistake. One, four, four, seven, fifty. Quarters one in twenty-twenty-five, quarters four of twenty-twenty-four.
Right.
And we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye, motion carries unanimous. Will you fill out the warrant, Tim?
Yeah, I'll run around.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So if that article passes, which I assume it will, then this activity wouldn't be ours anymore. We wouldn't have to worry about it.
Okay. But we still have access to the funds for anything that we wanted to do, right?
I would, I would.
Or anything like that.
I mean, I would think the Housing Trust I mean, they'd be paying the housing coordinator, part of the housing coordinator out of that, they pay the Metro West, that Assavet Consortium. Those are the only things I sp- I mean, if we were that we wanted to update the Housing Production Plan, um, you know, we'd go to the, the Housing Trust probably should drive that the next time around, like Conservation drives the Open Space Plan, so. But we would go to them and say, we, we need to update the Housing Production Plan and this, and we want to incorporate a a section in the zoning, in the master plan that would address housing, so we'd like you to pay for that too, out of your money, you know, yeah. I don't think, it sounds like we may lose the right to just use it for.
Right, it sounded, from what you read, it sounded like they're turning those over to the Housing Trust.
Yeah.
I always get concerned when we have to give up a rate.
Yeah. But I
Being transferred.
I think they'll, they'll, they'll be willing to work with us. I mean, if we were doing the Housing Production Plan and said we wanted to include the master plan part, I think they'd buy into it, so.
Okay. All right, so the next item, um, is the illuminated sign at Highland Commons for X Golf. So we had a proposal for a sign up there and we voted conditionally, um, that we would allow it with the, we wanted them to hold off on illuminating the back sign. But from my understanding that there was a reconnaissance mission done.
Little field trip.
A field trip, a night field trip, night vision field trip. And that, um, the illumination was not going to be intrusive or detrimental to the neighborhood or.
Correct. There's actually signs on BJs that are far more visible and one that, and one that I don't know that we approved.
Yeah.
I don't remember approving it.
We never approved an illuminated BJ's one. And that was the one that was brought to my attention, when I brought to the board's attention a couple, three months ago. Um, but, and I, then I noticed that the nail place and Jersey Mike's was also illuminated. And then with the golf place coming along, um, that's when I brought it to the forefront a little bit more, so.
Right, so the, just to recap the field trip, the ones on BJ's. So when you drive up to the building, um, the, the wall that is there on the left, they have a big giant BJ's sign and a big giant customer pickup sign, which is pretty new, actually.
The customer pickup one is definitely new.
Yeah, um, and both of those can be seen from Gates Pond Road. Um, the other ones are far enough back and the topography is such that you can't, you know, you can see the Jersey Mike's one a little bit, but it's not nearly as much of an issue um, as the BJ's ones and the the lights that illuminate the back of, so what's that Emerson, Emerson's Clinic and
So, so
Highland Liquors.
Is, is a separate issue. That's the one that, um, they've actually, so according to Jay, they've, um, reinstalled or replaced the shoebox ones with ones that aren't shoebox ones and are very visible and very, you know, they, a lot of light. But, um, for right now, I think that, I mean, that's an issue that we need to take and address.
Yeah, I would appreciate if we would, but yes, I know that's not what this is.
For this one, the illuminated sign, um, we've sort of told the building inspector that we didn't have an issue, that we just need to codify it now in a, you know, a formal vote, but, um, you know, we need to, because they, they have, they're under time crunch. They're supposed to open by the end of the week. Although the sign wasn't up, either one.
No.
Back as of today. But they're going, they're moving furniture in and they're moving other stuff in, so they're trying.
Cool.
They're trying. So, um, at this point, can I entertain a motion that will let the building inspector know that we don't have an issue with the illuminated sign on the back?
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second, uh, that will notify the building inspector for our little night field trip. Uh, all those.
It helped after the clocks changed. We didn't have to do it at nine-thirty at night.
That's true. That's true. I'll ask you to vote on this, uh, Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye, motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
Um, sorry, the business name again? I'm trying to, I'm taking the notes tonight, so.
It's what, Tom, can you see?
The business name, the
It's called X Golf.
As in the letter X?
Yes, I got that.
Dash Golf, yeah. It's at Highland Commons.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so I have, um, recorded this vote as to notify the building inspector that the Planning Board has no objection to the X Golf illuminated sign, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. So, um, let's take up the little, uh, the next part of the field trip about the, um, non-shoebox lights that are, uh, in the back, the emergency lights. Now, in our, in our, um, development agreement, would it be the development agreement? It's, it's in the, it's in, I don't know whether it's in the development agreement or it's actually in the, the zoning. Uh, but we talk about shoebox lighting and shielded lighting and that type of thing, so it's definitely there, so. I think we do have grounds to let the building inspector know that they're out of compliance. Now, I know that's, we could probably have more impact on the ones that are located in Berlin. I know that we put into place this development agreement that was adopted by Hudson as well without alteration, so theoretically, they should have no issue trying to enforce this, but we may get into a jurisdictional nonsense about, well, this is Hudson and we don't need to comply by your complaint in Berlin.
So, speaking as a resident of Gates Pond Road, um, those lights have always been just like, uh, it's, it's just a runway. And when Jay and I went out driving around, we, he wasn't really sure, you know, I kind of brought him up to speed on where the town line is and all that, and we drove around a little up there. Then we came down and went down past Murphy's Corner, turned around and came back, and that's when you really see it.
Right.
And it hit me right then. I was looking at all of the buildings. I am fairly sure that all of those lights are in Berlin.
Okay, good.
Um, just looking, yeah, because we drove around behind the buildings when we were up there too. And I noticed where they stopped. They're not on the back of Market Basket. And that's, and that's where the town line is.
Yes.
Um, so it, it, I believe they're all in Berlin.
Cool, good. That gives teeth, then we can go after them.
Yep, exactly.
Okay. All right, um, I'll send a, a little email to the building inspector tomorrow. And I'll, I'll let them know that, you know, we're unhappy with the, um, the other things, and we were doing our reconnaissance, we discovered.
And if you need nighttime pictures, just let me know.
Yep, okay.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, please.
So I'll move that we send a letter to the building inspector indicating that the lights on the side, backsides of um, Highland Commons are out of compliance with our either bylaw or development agreement.
Okay.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second uh, that the lights are, uh, to send a, um, email to the building inspector about the lights being out of compliance. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Uh, Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye, motion carries unanimous. I'll, I'll do that tomorrow morning.
Thanks.
Awesome.
Okay, is there any other um, business that we need to take care of? That anybody knows about? Any quick updates anybody wants to give? And stuff that's going on? We have a eight o'clock agenda and I want to wait until eight o'clock because if there's people in the audience or people want to zoom in, I don't want to start early.
Actually, could I come back to the first vote? Which I said was to pay the amount of fourteen, forty-seven, fifty. Uh, should that motion contain the account from which we're paying?
Um, I, I always, I don't know how she actually identifies it. Um, you, you could say from funds you, um, in the Housing Partnership's accounts from mitigation money.
Okay, so should I say from available mitigation monies?
Yeah.
That, okay.
Yeah, that, that's the safest thing.
All right. I don't think we have to re-vote that. I'll just end it. Okay?
Any other, uh, information or penetrating insights that somebody has that would like to share with the rest of the group?
If only.
Um, only. Jane would probably like to meet with us at our meeting in December. I assume.
Do we have another meeting in this month? No?
Usually we skip the second meeting in November, don't we?
Hold on, let me look at my calendar.
I know we always do December. I didn't know about November. It's, it'll fall during Thanksgiving week.
Right, it'll be that Tuesday.
Yeah.
I'll be around.
I'll be around.
I'll be around.
Yeah, I think I'll be around too.
Getting ready to cook for us. Cast the phalcons.
I mean, we could go ahead and ask Jane to join us at that one.
Yeah, because there's only one in December.
Correct.
On the tenth, because the second, the fourth Thursday is Christmas Eve. I will not be available that night.
So I, I mean, I suppose that makes sense because she wants to go over that um, presentation on the zoning diagnostic, just to make sure we're happy. I would think we'd hear in regard to the EEA grant fairly soon. The last time I saw her, I asked and she said they hadn't heard yet. They've been hearing from the one-stop grants, but not the EEA yet. Well, they extended the deadline for applications, so she assumed that, as a result, they extended their allowed time to act on the applications, so.
Okay, will you, um, send her a little, uh?
Yeah, what do you want, eight o'clock or something?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, I'll do that.
Thank you.
And also let Jane know.
Yes.
Well, once she confirms.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very cool.
I reached out to Meredith in the town of Hudson and, and haven't heard back. Um, that was a while ago and I will try again.
Refresh our memory. What was that for?
Um, in regard to getting some clarification concerning the, the, uh, the Solomon Pond Mall.
Hudson or Marlborough?
Uh, yeah, I was gonna try to see if she had some available dates and then Tom and I were gonna go try to track her down. That's what we talked about a couple meetings ago.
Correct. Was that Hudson, no? Meredith from Hudson?
Marlborough.
Okay.
Meredith Harris. Economic Development Coordinator or Director or something like that.
Right.
But I, we need to get some help and understanding where they sit in regard to the zone, the overlay. And whether they assume it has any impact on their new zoning that they've adopted for the Donald Lynch Boulevard, so.
Right. Did we hear back whether, uh, select board will allow us to talk to town council? To ask that same question?
Did we ask them?
We did.
Would we ask?
Know whether we were, when Peg was here, we asked if we could have that. And I don't know whether we decided we were going to postpone it until you asked for that meeting or whether we want to go ahead. It's sort of independent.
Yeah, I think they are. Um, you know, I can ask Kristen.
Yeah, I think it would be worth a while to at least have town council opine on whether that's copasthetic or not, or whether they throw everything away just because they didn't file it.
So that would be Heather. I'll ask Kristen. Good.
All right, I have eight o'clock.
All righty. Do we have, uh, members in the audience?
So we have lots of members in the audience. Oh, we've got Josh Klein.
So we're looking for
Right.
a Katie Ken Crow.
Yep, she's here.
Okay.
Um, Josh, are you part of the presenting group?
Yes.
Okay, I will elevate your status. All right. Katie, you should have been elevated also. Let me do that again. There you go. Anybody else need to be elevated? Katie, is there anyone else you would like me to elevate? Oh, you're on mute.
Hi, everybody. Um, my husband Roberts joining us as well.
Oh.
Um, Nikhil, is Nikhil coming in?
Yep.
Okay, is Dustin?
Dustin is here as well. And also um,
I, I don't think Erica's coming in on that.
We don't need anyone else from our team, Katie. They're here though, but.
Perfect. I think we're all set then.
All right.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
So you're here to give us a little update on, uh, the progress you've been making down on the parcel and River Road East?
Yeah, that's correct.
Excellent. So I will give you the floor and ask you to show us what you've been doing.
Okay, great. Josh, um, thank you. Josh actually is here. He's from Stonefield, um, Engineering. So he's gonna be helping out with any of the questions that you have or explaining where we are as far as the point of the site plan goes. Um, we do have, uh, preliminary design drawings completed and a site plan, uh, preliminary site plan completed. Um, you know, we're trying to put all our ducks in a row and, and cross all our Ts and dot all our Is, so we're prepared for application. Um, so I think, did you receive the email that was sent earlier with, with the site plan and drawings?
Um, no. Before we start though, could you do me a favor? Could you introduce the, um, the people that are on your team and what their function is? Um no, before we start though, could you do me a favor? Could you introduce the um the people that are on your team and what their function is?
Sure. Josh Klein is the engineer.
And who's he with?
Stonefield.
Okay.
And then Nikhil, you see there Nikhil is uh he's the architect and he's with Gregory Ralph Architects.
Okay.
Um is anyone else coming on, Josh? Is that it?
Uh okay. Dustin?
Dustin is with.
Hi, I'm here. Um I I just can't turn my video on, but um Nikhil will be presenting for us.
He's with the architecture firm.
Okay.
Nice to meet you all.
Thank you.
Perfect. If you're ready, um Tom, I can definitely get started.
Yes, please, Josh.
Perfect. Well, thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having us again. Josh Klein, Stonefield Engineering and Design. We're the Site Civil as well as the Traffic Engineer for the project. I'm a licensed professional engineer and. In Massachusetts as well as about twelve other states in the across the country. Um I'm also a partner with the firm, so. We're really excited to be here. You know, our team is kind of just really getting in into the weeds on the project. I have up on the screen now. Hopefully everyone can see. Our preliminary site plan. Are you able to see that?
Hmm, yes.
Perfect. So that's great. So you know, we're we're kind of happy to to really start moving this this project forward. So we have, you know, our team engaged. We have. Nikhil and the architectural team that's been working on it a little bit longer, kind of putting together a lot of the. Nice pieces of the puzzle in place. Um we have a survey team that we've retained. We're working with a wetland scientist. Um and kind of going through our our due diligence process. So what we wanted to really start to do and. And present tonight kind of before the the application moves forward, there's going to be a few months as we. Kind of get into the more technical aspects to develop the plan is kind of give the the board an update of of where we're at, kind of an update of. Some of the different pieces, um you know, of this kind of facility. Um and kind of explain, you know, some different facets, you know, of the site and things that we're we're going to be looking at over the next several weeks as we develop the plans. Um I'm sure this board's very familiar. I don't know if anyone's on for the public. We have River Road West to the bottom of the page. Uh we have Gates Pond Brook on the right hand side, which is in blue. Some of the the things that we're kind of highlighting, I mean, based on kind of GIS availability or kind of where our wetlands are located. We have both um. A twenty-five foot and a hundred foot buffer line shown. That's the green dashed lines. You can kind of see. On the right hand side, and then we also have the riverfront buffer, the two hundred foot buffer shown in the blue dash dot line. So it kind of gives us an idea. You know, initially, you know, high level, where are some of the environmental constraints, at least offsite, that are impacting the property? Um you know, as our our wetland scientist will is being engaged and going to be going to the property. Um as we zoom in a little bit. You can kind of start to get a sense of the layout. So this, you know, one of the big goals here and and we'll let Nikhil and the architecture team go through because they've really been working hard at it. Is creating a sense of community, kind of connecting the different elements of this site together. Um so you know, we we want to ensure that, you know, both the students, the public. And kind of community member staff that are using this facility are all kind of connected. And can operate safely and effectively. So you know, right now, we kind of have the main campus kind of in the central part of the site and. Nikhil will go through a little bit more of the the building functions and the interiors and some of the imagery that we've developed. So we've kind of centralized kind of that main campus. Uh we've included kind of a a centralized main entrance to the facility. Uh we've done like a bifurcated access and ingress egress with some nice landscaping in the middle. And then we've kind of broken the parking areas into a parking area B on the left and a parking. Area, sorry, B on the right, A on the A on the left. Um the parking area A will kind of be the main. Entrance for the school pickup drop off. Um parking for staff associated uh with the day to day operation of the school. As well as, you know, parents, visitors, things of that nature. Um parking area B is going to be both kind of a combination park area that's going to be used by the public. Used by community members that are coming to the site. Parents, faculty, staff, it'll kind of be a mixed kind of parking lot to support the development. Um you can kind of see and and I don't know how much it's been talked about before, but some of the different elements of the facility kind of around the site. We have. Kind of six nursery buildings shown in the the bottom left hand corner with. Which provide a nice connection to the main facility. We have some additional nursery buildings at the back. We have kind of a horse stable with an outdoor run out along with a recreation area. Um kind of running to the top left corner. As you work your way to the right, we've kind of captured the back of the house with the loading for the facility in this area here. Um we have some open outdoor recreation area, and we've also highlighted some overflow parking. So you know, as we. Kind of go through the process of developing the plan, you know, our office is going to be kind of looking a little bit further at the operation as a whole to develop a parking management plan. For the site, but based on our initial kind of IT estimates as well as taking in, you know, the local bylaw. Um we've kind of landed right around this range of two hundred and eighty parking spaces, give or take. So we're going to try to see if we're going to be able to. Reduce that number. I think our goal with this site is to try to reduce impervious. We want to have as much open space as we can. We want to have as much landscaping, outdoor amenity that's available. So it'll be something we kind of work on over the next several weeks. Um initially, we've kind of highlighted a septic area, so we definitely have to kind of go through the Title V and groundwater discharge. Permit process a little bit further, get a better understanding of the. Uh of some of the flows and the usage, but we've kind of highlighted an area that, you know, we deemed would be acceptable. Um we'll have to obviously go through some additional geotech testing. I know Katie has done some soil testing on site and found this area. You know, could be favorable to support a septic system. Um again, I'm a or. Our office, myself included, I'm a licensed soil evaluator, so we'll be involved as well as a geotechnical engineer. Um we also highlighted kind of central for centrally where it kind of the well. Um the well and the well equipment that would be located, so kind of behind the building. Um but again, that area might move as we do some additional testing on the site. But again, what's what I think is really nice with this development is. You know, we have the ability to kind of adjust the septic field as well as the well to be accommodated in different areas on site. We're not located with any zone twos. There's no IWPAs that might impact the location of the septic. Or the well from our initial research, and we do have enough room internally that these these pieces can kind of move to support the development. So that's really the the overview. You know, you can kind of see on this, we have the topography brought in. There there'll be some adjustments to accommodate. Um the access that's proposed to the site. Um but again, we've, you know, we've definitely have have made some really good steps initially and we we look forward to kind of continuing to push the project forward.
It looks good. There's a lot of parking.
Yeah, initially, initially, you know, kind of what we look at is kind of initial IT numbers is the zoning ordinance would actually require. Um it really doesn't contemplate, you know, the use that well, so it's very hard. So what we did was we looked at IT parking generation. Numbers to kind of get an initial feel, uh but what we're going to be doing is kind of continuing in our analysis, probably a shared parking analysis. Again, I think our goal and even from a cost perspective is to kind of get the parking down, but. Um you know, from a traditional school IT number, you know, this parking is less, you know, a lot of. Um you know, what's driving it, um you know, would be, you know, if we went with kind of an older model without a shared parking, it it'd want even more parking than what you're seeing. So we're pretty confident that we'll be able to get that number down, but you know, what we're looking to and you can kind of see in these parking areas, it's really nice is we're incorporating landscape islands. Incorporating landscape strips, pedestrian connectivity. So our goal is to be able to kind of plant these parking lots, beautify them, get some. Reduce that heat island effect. So that'll be definitely something we go through with our landscape architecture team.
Right. Now, you do correct me if I'm wrong. I think at one point in time you uh it was stated that. Uh some of these students arrive by buses or okay, transportation along those um uh vehicles. Is there a like a a a bus turnout or a um you know, like a a bus? Um. Shelter or something like that on campus that we're just not seeing here or?
Yeah, if I could just speak for that, Josh, it's um so the buses are not going to be the traditional uh large buses. It's going to be more of these special education sized buses, the smaller ones.
Okay.
And uh we dedicated the left side, that that road coming from the left side of the site to be able to have those boat buses coming in. Pulling in towards the school drop off and then back through the other side of the parking lot and out.
Okay, got it.
If I may, Tom?
Uh let me just see if they concluded their presentation first.
Okay.
Is there anything?
Yeah, through the chair, I mean, it's, would you like us to kind of go through the whole thing and then do questions at the end? Nikhil's gonna continue and kind of show some of the architecture and some some renderings as well.
Um for. Yeah, let's do that. Let's have the presentation first and then we'll uh open it up to questions. Board and then I'll open it up to general public. So yeah, please can continue. I I interrupted, so I should probably shouldn't have.
Thank you. My name's Nikhil. I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey. Our firm's licensed in Massachusetts. I'm probably going to share my screen, Josh, because I'll probably move between your plan and my plan.
Perfect, easier for me.
Yep. Can you guys see my screen?
Hmm, yep.
Not yet, yeah, okay.
So are you seeing my?
Yeah, yeah, we can see it.
Okay, all right. So Josh went through the plan uh through the site plan. He mentioned that the left side of the plan is where the. Uh students are going to come in from the right side is more for the parents and the loading dock. Uh what what is the main, the main part of the plan is the academy itself. It's kind of a hub and spoke model, kind of a design where. All all parts of the projects are interconnected, where students can actually learn in the academy and then move to various. Areas within where they can get training, uh on job training kind of a thing. So as we enter, you see on the left side over here, that's the main entrance to the school where you have students lounge and the cafeteria or the gathering area. Where students will be grouped together and they'll go to do their various activities such as the groundskeeper area where they receive training. This area is close to the uh the horse stables and the paddock. This is the corner that we're seeing in the plan. We also have a learning kitchen that's close to the cafeteria kitchen. The learning kitchen's almost directly connected to the main plaza. The plaza is where all the commercial activity is going to happen. So this is like a high end restaurant that's going to be connected to the school. The students studying in the learning kitchen. Will be able to come and work over here with their chaperones. They'll also be able to work in bar areas and event rooms. What what we have is that on the second floor of the academy, we what we have designed is various therapy rooms for the students. When the students go out in groups. They have forty-five minute classes and in these forty-five minutes, they're either going into therapy or they're going into. Or different activities that they'll be going to. For example, they'll be probably going to the fine arts or the real time tech, which is directly connected. By via staircase to the first floor of the plaza that's going to serve the gift shop. These the kids are going to actually get training into how how to make. The uh greeting cards and stuff like that. So that will be sold in the gift shops over here. Um what you also see over here is a nursery, the nursery, if you look at the site plan. Is somewhere over here and that's corrected directly to the horticulture gardens where the students are going to learn how to how to work in the. How to grow plants and stuff and then provide them for sale in the plaza. Uh on the first floor, we have the learning kitchen, which is directly connected to the others four nurseries that Josh was showing on the site plan. That is actually a produce garden. The kids are going to actually, the students are actually going to learn how to. Grow their own plants, grow their own herbs, and then try to use them in the restaurant, in the learning kitchen. So basically what we're seeing is that this, the academy itself is the hub of the space. And the hub has spokes that go out that connects to various activities where where students will get on job training. So so what we see over here, this this is the entrance of the schools that you're seeing where the kids are going to enter. The school from, this is something, this is what we are visualizing the produce garden to look like, uh the nursery and the bakery. That's a part of the plaza that's connected to the. Nursery. Uh. Sorry. Uh this is the main plaza that we are looking at, the main plazas, which is going to house the restaurants, the gift shops where the students are going to work. It's going to get, we're going, we're trying to create spaces where the community and the students can gather together and intermingle with each other. Basically trying to. Trying to make them feel like it's it's an actual real world place and improve interactions with people and the community. That's it.
Do you have elevators in this building?
We do have an elevator in the building.
I see it, yeah, I couldn't see it, it was too far away.
So we have. The second floor actually houses the administrative office and it has occupation therapy rooms, speech therapy rooms. ABA therapy rooms, physical therapy rooms. It also has some classes like real time tech. Where students actually learn how to work with, you know, Photoshop and other softwares. Which they can use to create gifts. The fine arts is also one section. The at home hospitality is actually going to teach kids how to make beds in hotels, how to operate laundries in hotels. And and. That's 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 most of what the second floor is. We have some nurses stations, some security and some additional office space. On the second floor over here, but as you notice, this second floor is directly connected to an elevator and a staircase that goes down on the first floor. And is very close to the plaza, the staircase and the elevators are here. Kids can just come down and go to the gift shop or the flower shop. The nursery is again directly connected to the outdoor nursery that we see, the six nurseries that we see over here. It's directly connected over here, so students can actually work over here and then go to the nursery. Where the actual sales happen, where they're where they'll be trained on how to deal with customers and clients. Um on the first floor, you'll you'll also notice that there's a bakery and a small baking kitchen over here. Where again, in the small coffee shop, this is where we think that the community will come in from River Road. They'll probably spend some time. They'll get to know these people. They'll get to know how they function. Basically, what will happen is we'll, the students will actually. Get to intermingle with the society. They'll know how to interact in society and they'll be able to, they'll be ready to get into the workforce.
Mm hmm.
Can we see the other page of pictures of renderings that you have?
Sure.
So that one we saw. You have, there's another page. Well, yes, yep. Okay, so the back on the drawing, I was wondering, is the school courtyard? So that'll be just for the students.
That will be just for the students. That's right.
Yep.
We we do want places where kids can, where students can gather together and, you know, some outdoor space and some activities can happen. The stables are really close to the groundskeeper area, so. Students can just walk. Once they get some training and they get their stuff, they can walk to the stables. A lot of. A lot of students actually like to interact with animals. They 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 feel really comfortable in their presence, so we think that it's it's a nice addition to the whole campus.
Hmm.
How many stalls in the stable are you anticipating?
Uh we are anticipating around four to six stalls, anywhere between four and six. We haven't gone into the depths of the design of the stables itself. We've generally located them for now.
True. We're a very horse friendly community. I was just curious.
It's nice to know.
And and then may I add, that is going to be open to the general public for um horseback riding lessons and especially on the weekends.
Oh, cool.
Nice.
Every every ounce of the, every every element that we've located on the campus is open to the general public, even the open acres on the other side. That will be open to the general public, whereas, you know, on Halloween, we'll have pumpkin patch painting and. And during Christmas, we'll have uh like a small ice skating rink, so the parents can come, go to the restaurant and then bring their kids on the ice skating rink for a few minutes. Or even in the summer, it can be like a small kind of like like smaller, kind of like theater, outdoor theater setting where we can go sit in chairs and. And have some smores and just watch a little homestyle bit family video uh movie. So it's something just trying to engage in the families and the community so they can come and have dinner. And also entertain their children for an hour or so on the weekends. Um and then perhaps grab a coffee at the coffee shop or it's just. Um, and then perhaps grab a coffee at the coffee shop or it's just a place that they can come and have an experience, not just an in and out.
Very interesting.
And also, we'd like to open up to the retirement community, um, you know, they love gardening or they love working in kitchens or even in the art studios and invite them in. Instead of sitting, they can come and enjoy making their jam and jelly or working in the gardens with us. So we'd like to open up to the retirement population as well.
Cool.
Caroline, did you have a question that you wanted to answer or did you?
I did.
You did.
I did have a question. So um, one of the, well, I know there are several concerns from the neighbors, but one of them that I know is, do you anticipate keeping that higher ground that's right along River Road? In between, yeah, right in there.
I think that I'm, yeah, I'm speaking for architects' side uh point of view and as well as the engineering. We'd like to keep as much as possible. We want to disturb as little amount of um of grounds as we can. So we know that we're going to have to go through this, through that larger entrance is going to have to have some removed, but we'd like to clean up and keep as much as we can to each side in as well as each side of the other entrances. And as, and and also within the whole site, we really don't want to disturb as much. And that's why we're, we're trying to get the parking down and, and we try to make that campus real tight in that center. We really don't want to disturb as much. That's why, one reason the horse um running area is over in that area where it's beautiful. It's all, it's a, you know, that, that ledge and it's just all rock and it's really gorgeous in that back. And that's why we really don't want to go back there and disturb anything. We'd rather just keep it. So um, that's the main goal on everyone's side, as far as engineering, architecture, as well as myself. We really don't want to disturb as much. We will keep as much as that, um, you know, the, the front, um, the frontage, the way it's grown up and just clean it up, um, and have it look beautiful.
And I'm assuming on this plan, um, you can kind of see where, I I'm assuming that's the existing opening. You can't, you can't see where I'm pointing?
Yeah. I know where it is, I bear saw open, but it's right where the other parking lot is. You see like a swirl, a a white.
Exactly.
Two swirls, that is the existing opening right now.
Okay, and so you would kind of fill that back in?
Yes, correct. We would make, we would just incorporate what's going on both sides of it and fill that. No, no, she's talking about right here. That's where the original one is that we drive in and out right here, that white is, see that white? That's where the original, that's not built up, so right at that corner, but yeah.
Fill that, put some trees in, and then just move it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Those are all the questions I have for now.
Okay, does any other board member have any uh questions or insights that they would like to share?
Mr. Wheeler has his hand up.
Mr. Wheeler.
Thanks, Tom. Um, so Katie, i- if we, is this fairly cutting-edge or i- is it possible to within thirty miles find another facility that's similar?
So um, I spent about like ten years researching the United States to search all successful programs for adults with special needs. Um, and there is nothing like this that actually is uh has as much of vocational training on campus and also acts self-sustaining financially. So there are pieces, yeah, there are farms across every state that bring in um individuals with special needs and they're, they're able to be there. But that process of that's all they're able to do is farm, that's pretty much, or they're in a, in a, we're in a a barn situation, making pottery or or candles or, but there's, there's, if you're going to be able to go to to a bakery that's going to teach them how to bake goods, it's a bakery. And you're not going to be able to be working in the garden or working in a computer lab or working on on landscaping or working anywhere else. I mean, this is really, i- there is nothing else like it that acts like a college campus for the population that has special needs and special uh like autism. So that, that's why we tried, we searched and searched, searched all successful programs and brought them to one place and created almost like a college, community college campus that will be able to give them options and give them the right training and the right support while they're training.
And then the, the number of students and the number of staff, and then can you remind us again about the ages of the students?
Sure. The students right now, the population is two hundred and fifty for this campus and the age will range from eighteen to twenty-five, I'm sorry, eighteen to thirty.
Okay. And the staff would be?
So the staff is going to be, um, some are not full-time because you're going to have some therapists that come in just a few days a week. So some are not full-time. If it was a full-time and everyone was on campus at one time, it's between one eighty and two hundred staff.
Okay.
That's because a lot of these individuals, they're, they're just like a special education school operates. Six kids in a class, you have a teacher and two aides. So we tried to make sure that they're going to get the proper support. There's, they're, the only way they'll be successful in learning of these, any of these skills is if they have the proper support surrounding them the entire time. So a lot of, we have a lot of what we call guardians.
So, and and then the, my last question is, um, in regard to the, the um, the center on the rotary that is dealing with um autism and then there's a workforce training site at the corner of Whitney and Pleasant Street, just over the line from uh in North Row. Are, are they doing anything that's similar or complimentary? Or do you, do you see yourself associating with any of those endeavors?
I a hundred percent see us collaborating because they're, they're, the program, especially down the road, they're an ABA facility, so what they are is they're, they're a therapy facility. So you can take your kids there out after school or weekends or in, or nights, and they provide uh applied behavioral analysis therapy, uh which is one of the stronger therapy um, um types that they use that a lot of people with autism respond to very well. So that is not a vocational learning center, it's not for adults, it's not specific to anything outside of getting them engaged in the community. That is a specific center to help them with behavioral therapy.
Mm-hmm, great.
But yes, uh I would, we, we definitely want to collaborate, just the way we're collaborating with the Doug Flutie Foundation and and a lot of other, the, the Cottin School has reached out and they want to collaborate and and support this, which is in Lexington, and a lot of schools have reached out because this is, they know that what is happening to the population once they leave high school. So um, again, we are open because we are, we're a community and we want to be able to respond and collaborate with anyone that needs this or anyone that wants to support this or anyone that, that um feels that they out, can offer something. You know, there's some people that will be able to offer something. Maybe it's someone comes in and says, I want to come into your learning kitchen and help the students learn how to make my favorite, you know, apple pie. So we definitely want to invite everyone in to help make this a successful program.
Thanks.
Anybody else from the board?
Uh, actually, what, what are you looking at timeline-wise in an ideal world?
Ideal world, this would be operating within three years.
Okay.
Okay, at this time, um, I'll open it up if there's any questions from uh the general public that are attending on the Zoom platform?
No hands up.
Okay.
Oh. Do have a hand up. Karen, is that you?
Yes, it's Karen and Michael.
Okay.
Good evening, afternoon.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Tom.
I said, good evening, how are you?
Oh, good, thank you. Um, Katie, the entrance to the east, to the furthest entrance to the west, that berm along the front, as um Carolyn was asking, is that the berm that is coming down and the berms around the rest of the property are staying? Or is there any intention to have any of the berms along the homes that face the homes on River Road be protected?
Oh, yes, Karen, right where you're, where you're speaking of, where the, where the entrance is right now, we feel, we're going to keep those berms and we're going to fill in in between where the entrance is right now. We're going to fill that in and make it look naturally um all one.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, also, we note that there's six in and out onto River Road in a fairly tight um amount of space. Is there any thought to doing any of those as one way in and one way out? Be, because as we've noted before, that part of the road, it is a tricky part of the road with the curve in there and cars coming through and having six entrances in and out onto that road is fairly um tough.
Um, so I'm gonna let Josh, yeah, yeah, I'll let Josh answer that.
Yeah, to, just to clarify, I know it's zoomed out a little, so there's three driveways. So there's only kind of three proposed driveways, so uh they, they have been strategically placed, kind of spreading them out a little bit. Um, one of the things that we do look at when we locate the driveways and as we prepare the, the formal plans is we'll start to look at the site distances. But that was one of the goals in placing these, was to try to kind of spread them out, ensure that sightlines um are proper, ensure there's enough spacing between the driveways to make movement safe. And then one of the other nice things about the driveways and how they're interconnected with the development is when different parts of the development are operating, you know, when the, in the mornings versus the evenings versus the daytime, different driveways will be being used. So it, it helps kind of spread out and prevent any type of impact.
Yeah, the, I got the six just because it's um, one in and, yeah, three times, two, one in, one out, one in, one out, one in, one out. And they're, they're fairly close. I don't know if you had any conversation with the town about the back road that um swings around the back of that property and comes through uh another neighborhood further down the road, just to lessen the amount of driveways uh coming in and out onto River Road.
I'm not quite sure this, this is property butt up against it?
Yes.
Coming in the horse area.
Around the horse area, there's a back entrance, it was one of the proposed ways when the neighborhood was going to go in there to facilitate traffic in and out.
That's.
There's been. Mm-hmm.
So is it, because that's a huge ledge, that goes up very, very steep. As you can see, the contours build up and build up and build up. That's a much higher point than where we are down in the campus. So I'm not sure how, how would it be, it would be a very steep road going up.
Uh, no, it's not quite where that ledge is, it's, it's.
Further back.
It's, it's further down, I mean, it's hard to describe at that point, obviously.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah, in, in that area, there is another.
It's in the back port by the um, the trampoline, what is that thing called?
The zip line.
Zip line thing, it's back by the zip line.
Yeah, there is another.
So that is.
I think that's definitely something we can attain, we can look at that and see if that's um something, especially for the school parking lot, one in and then the classes could leave on that section.
Mm-hmm.
Is it, are there homes right there?
I was just gonna say, doesn't that go through residential?
Yeah.
No, it's behind those homes, further back, set back.
The, the houses are served by a common driveway, which is definitely a, a non-public way. Um, there is a public way that goes partway up and then becomes a private way into Boundless Adventures. Uh, so we'd have to see where that road network starts and stops and what's public and what's private.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be one way to eliminate some of those entries on and off of River Road and um help the folks down at that end of the, the road a little bit. Also, um, we noted in the conversation that when we, when you were first talking about the school, it was a Monday to Friday school schedule with uh the stores and the retail outlets open during the school. This time around, I hear nighttime and weekends.
Oh, I'm sorry if that was misunderstood. No, the, the school isn't shut during the day, Monday through Friday, and the campus itself is open to the general public, Monday through Friday. I mean, I'm all the, oh, seven days a week, you know, and closing down during the week, you know, certain times, but it's not, the school itself is Monday through Friday and the students are Monday through Friday. But because it's open to the general public, the restaurant, the bakery, those elements will be opened to the general public throughout the nights and weekends. And what we'll do is we'll have the students that are very, very, very well-trained and high-functioning, they'll be able to have opportunity during the weekends to have, to be working.
Hi Katie, this is Michael. I reside at one eight three River Road West. Um, something which does slightly concern you, again, coming back to the three entrances, is of course, at times of the year when uh car lights would need to be on and of course, as people turn to either go left or right as they come out. If they have full beams on, of course, then our, our properties are going to get illuminated, which that's another area that concerns me, and that's why Karen, my wife, of course, is raising the, the concern if we can somehow spread that um, that traffic, as it were, because as I'm sure you can imagine, where you have the double entrance in the middle, uh, and it doesn't really matter if someone's going to turn left or right, whichever, some will go left, some will go right, presumably it'd be something like fifty-fifty. Each of the properties will, will, will get sort of um inundated with light, so that's, that's one observation I make.
Okay, so one, one thing that we're trying, the, it's the same thing with Josh who's trying to do is the, when a lot of people are coming into the campus or leaving the campus, I should say, they're probably going to be leaving from the far right or the far left. So people are coming during the weekend, especially or at night, if they're going to the restaurant, they're parked in the parking lot on the right and they're going to be leaving from that far right location, which is fairly far away from your home.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I hear you, I understand, you know, that, that, that of course would be beneficial because there's no house directly opposite that far right entrance. It's just down into the uh, the wetlands and where the river curves, so yeah, that would be beneficial.
Yes, we're being very sensitive to the neighbors when designing everything and Josh is, is, I think, has come up with a very good solution.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have anything else you want to add, Karen?
No.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
I'm going to put you guys back in the audience.
Thank you.
And we have another hand up, Julie. Go ahead, Julie.
Can you hear me okay?
Hi Julie, how are you?
Okay. This is Julie Malloy, here with my husband Mike. We live at one ninety River Road West on the right of this diagram. And I was wondering a couple of things, if we could get a copy of this plan. I know it's preliminary, but back a few, several years ago, many years ago, actually, Worcester Sand and Gravel took down a great number of the very mature white pines and kind of went over onto our land and took some of the gravel out. And they did have to put it back, the thanks to the selectmen coming out, they were beyond the, the scope of where they were able to work. So we're very sensitive to our berm on the right side of this too. Um, has it all been, um, have engineers put up the lot lines and so forth?
So we're, Julie, we're having a, a boundary and topographic survey completed over the next couple of weeks. So we'll, you know, they'll kind of confirm where the boundary lines are um and kind of help us, you know, ensure that we're kind of in, staying within the development area. I think one of the nice things you'll see is the proposed development is, is kind of staying, you know, right around initially about a hundred feet away from the property line. There's kind of that initial slope, it's probably where the cut slope was from the gravel pit. Uh, but that's great to know, good, it's good feedback, it's something we'll make sure our surveyor, you know, takes a close look at that lot line for you.
Yeah, that'd be great. We would appreciate that. That, that berm serves as a great barrier between us and the property. Now, the other thing I want to mention is we also have a driveway permit for a driveway further down than our main driveway, right next to, kind of close to where your proposed driveway is. I didn't know if you guys were aware of that or not. We obtained a permit many years ago for another driveway because we have such a hard time pulling out of our driveway. We um, we did kind of cut another driveway in further up. It's up, up on the hill a little bit. It's up up on the hill a little bit.
Julia, you on the left or the right of the site plan?
We're on the right of the site plan.
Yeah, we have. I I do know the driveway you're talking about, Julie. So it's definitely. You know, one of the things we'll be looking at is we'll be doing some sightline analysis when we kind of finalize the placement of the driveways. So we can we'll definitely take that into account. But thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, they're not. Then it's neither of our driveways are paved, but that one's kind of up on the hill a little bit. Mike, did you have questions? Yeah, we just want to protect. Yeah, we had a lot of pines reinstalled by Worcester Sand and Gravel, so we would hate to lose them. The ones that came down were like hundred year old pines. It was terrible. It happened in one day too.
Are they on your property or on this property?
They were on the trees that came down and the land that was taken was on our property. In fact, there's still a there's still a silk fence up there.
Okay, so are the new trees on your property as well?
Are the new trees all up? Yeah, they're very close to the line. Yeah, they're supposed to be on the line.
Okay, well, we don't intend to touching anything that's like, like, like Josh said, within a hundred feet of that property line. We don't intend on touching any of the trees or or mounds or anything surrounding the property. So we would be at least, we would not be anywhere near those pine trees.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Julia. Julie, I'm going to put you back in the audience as well.
Sure. Thank you.
And now, Michael.
Go ahead, Michael.
Hi, I'm Michael Rochette at one seventy five River Road. I have to commend you on a a tremendous project and presentation. It is, it looks like a good design. Just a couple of questions for me. And if you have said this already, I apologize. Do you have a an estimate of the number of vehicles in total coming and going daily at this facility?
So we haven't, I was gonna say, we haven't finished any type of traffic study, but it's it's something our office will be looking at.
Okay. Will the facility have lights on all night, in in particular, the parking areas? And what will the height of the light standards be, such as the lit up facility indoor parking lots affect on neighbors?
It's a great question. You know, we'll definitely have to, you know, look and make sure we comply with any local bylaw in terms of the lighting design, locations, heights and things of that nature. You know, something we'll we'll have to work through as we get a little bit further into the design is, you know, ensuring that there's enough perimeter and safety lighting on site, but also there's not a nuisance, you know, to any of the residents surrounding. So it's definitely something that we'll be looking at and kind of preparing a lighting design and photometric plan as part of the package.
True. You did mention that the educational facility will be a Monday to Friday thing. But shops and restaurants and things will be open seven days a week for public access. Do you know what hours of operation that would would be for those days?
We're going to stick to the traditional hours that are operating within other restaurants or other storefronts or shops that are within the Berlin area and and close surrounding. We're not, this is not going to be like a Manhattan or or Boston type, open all night. We definitely will be shutting them down at a reasonable time that makes sense for the community and within what's happening within the community as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think I'm all set.
All right.
Thank you, Michael.
I'm going to put you back in the audience. No other hands up?
Okay. Any other questions from the board members? Okay. Katie, would you like to make some closing remarks?
Well, at this point, thank you for tonight. I appreciate it. I know it's been a few meetings and you've we're trying to put everything together and make it right for everybody. And I have a great team, a phenomenal team working on this. They know just as well as I do how important the neighbors and the town of Berlin matter. So we are all on the same page to making sure every design and every aspect of this campus makes sense. And then it's not going to be a hinder and everyone will be, it'll be, it'll work well and it'll be a beautiful element to the Berlin community. But I also would like to know from you at this point, you know, we're going to move forward full speed. Is there anything that the board is seeing or concerned about if you could bring to the to our attention so that we make sure that we touch base on everything and make sure that we're prepared?
So I mean, the ZBA will be keenly interested in a couple of the issues that have been raised by the neighbors, certainly. That, you know, having a a traffic study done that gives you a better estimate as to the impact of traffic. And if, you know, if you look at what's required in some of ours zoning in regard to lighting, I think you can realize that there's good ways to minimize the impact on the butters. But those are are two areas that usually you know, become higher priorities for the ZBA as they look at site plan review.
Okay.
And from a conservation perspective, I assume since no work is happening over by Gates Pond Brook. There won't be a filing about that, but if the driveway stays in the riverfront area from across the street, they assume you'll be coming in for with a notice of intent for that.
Correct. Yeah, depending on the final kind of layout and and any type of flagging that's done, it will dictate whether we're going to be, you know, needing an RDA or an NOI for any of the improvements.
Okay.
And then I guess I would just at some point be curious as to a percentage of impervious surface in relation to the lot size.
We'll stay within the zoning ordinances. We won't, we I personally am not in favor of creating heat island and heat island effects. I hate when we create large impervious surfaces. Even during site plan design, we were talking to Josh and we were saying we don't want huge parking lots. We wanted landscape. We wanted to feel nice and comfortable. We don't want huge impacts happening to the environment.
And we did also speak with getting rid of some of the paved area and doing more like a gravel. If there's walkways, gravel or or other things that we could do throughout the the traffic pattern that will eliminate from actually having pavement.
Awesome.
Well, for that.
Yep, you could incorporate rain gardens as well.
Yeah, I was gonna say that, you know, low impact development and stormwater management are are of interest to us. We don't have a stormwater management section in our zoning bylaw, but we'll be working on that with the Regional Planning Commission over the next couple of years, actually, here, probably. But, you know, whenever you can incorporate a lot of those new approaches to stormwater management and low impact development, and it sounds like that's your intent, but that that really would please us. And I, as Carolyn said, you know, we're happy to entertain folks that want to develop parking that's pervious, so. We'd be happy to see that. And the ZBA would be too, I imagine.
Yep. And conservation definitely would.
Tom, Julie has her hand up again.
Okay.
Julie.
Yes, just one more quick question that I forgot. Is there any blasting required? We we kind of went through it with a lot of blasting at Worcester Sand over the years. So it's nice to know it's going to happen and to be prepared.
It's it's just going to be a typical construction site where we will be, you know, they're doing a lot of site development in order to get the buildings and the layout of the design done. But we don't plan on, no, we're not doing any blasting at this point. Again, we we're going to really need the engineers to go out there and do a full survey of the site to make sure that we're, but it might move some of our elements around, like we're not, we're not looking to disturb this land. We really are not. We want to make sure we we just incorporate our campus within the beautiful site that we have.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Well, I thank you all for this update. It looks wonderful and the plans look great. Really looking forward to seeing this come to fruition. I think it's a great thing that you're doing and it's definitely needed in our community and the larger community beyond us. So I commend you for your efforts.
And I want to, I want to say thank you for putting so much thought into it.
Thank you. It's been several years, but and and to be honest, we have, we couldn't have found a better team to put this together. Everyone really, really feels the same way I do about making this a community project and making sure that Berlin, it fits in Berlin and Berlin's happy with it. That everyone on board and this team has been phenomenal. So I appreciate them very much. And I appreciate all of you giving me the time today, too.
You're welcome. All righty, grand. So rough timeline. Do you think you can update us in, I don't know, a couple of three, four months from now as you progress things along?
Josh?
Yeah, I think that, you know, three, four months, you know, I think by then we hope to have an application together. So I know we we have some due diligence coming up over the next few weeks going into the end of the year. So we'll we'll definitely keep the board apprised of of what we're doing.
Okay, perfect.
You know, I mean, certainly the benefit of coming to us is that you you get to iron out some of the wrinkles before you get to deal with the ZBA. And they're not in a position to have the type of dialogue that we're having with you and get neighbors participating in this process early on. So, you know, you, this is a prudent choice you're making by coming, I think, and and participating with some of these activities with the planning board. So we appreciate it and I think it's a good idea.
It's very important. It really is. We're all in this together, like we're all trying to make the best decisions here and make sure that this is a successful program. And I can't do it without your help. So I think that what we're doing piece by piece and and making sure we're connecting and collaborating and keeping the the conversation open is a very important piece.
Well, thanks. So it's good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, everyone.
Take care.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're pretty much on schedule. Is there anything else that we need to, excuse me, take up as a board? That was our last agenda item, I believe. Timely items.
We didn't have minutes that we needed to vote on, did we?
I don't remember seeing minutes.
I don't either. So I think
So I'm gonna have to wait on that, I think.
Yeah, good.
Mr. Andrew is very quiet, scribing away. Is there anything you would like to add to?
No, no, I mean, I think obviously, first time I saw the plan, but I agreed with everybody and, you know, I thought it was more I'm certainly very much in favor of the project and looking at at the preliminary plan, I didn't, you know, I didn't have any concern that wasn't raised. I thought it was more important to hear from people. So I just listened.
Excellent. I think it's worthwhile. I think that that's an appropriate use for that piece of property. And I think it could be a real asset to our our community.
Here, here.
Yep.
Certainly needed.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Well, you see the use of that site, that's the rotary and how busy it is on the weekends, as you said. I mean, it's, it's great to have these beginning to pop up and begin to serve that community.
Awesome.
Okay, so we do have a meeting the week of Thanksgiving, right?
Yep.
And I'll reach out to Jane.
Okay. And then we'll take it from there. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, yeah.
Second.
Second.
Guys, we're all jumping at that one, aren't we?
Motion is made and seconded to adjourn. It's non-discussable. So at this point, I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
And Tom Sampit, aye. Vote is unanimous.